Calling to order the Monday, March 3rd, 2025, meeting of the 40th Council of the City of Berkeley. Ms. Mitchell, will you please call the roll?
Councilmember Baker?
Here.
Councilmember Black?
Greetings, council, staff, and residents from Fort Snell in Minnesota. I am here on military duty.
Mayor Protam Gavin?
Here.
Councilmember Hannon? Councilmember Patterson?
Here.
Councilmember Vlani? Mayor Dean?
Here. The first order of business this evening is the approval of the agenda. Is there a motion to approve tonight's agenda?
So moved.
Motion made by Councilmember Patterson with support from Councilmember Baker. Are there any changes or corrections? Seeing none, Ms. Mitchell, please call the roll.
Black?
Yes.
Gavin?
Yes.
Patterson?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes. The agenda has been approved. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We've now come to the portion of the meeting where you may present your thoughts on issues that are not included on tonight's agenda. When you come to the microphone, please state your name and city of residence. Councilmembers will not engage you in discussion, but if your concern needs to be followed up by a member of city staff or a council member, we ask that you leave your contact information on the sheet, which is just outside this door on a table. You have three minutes to tell us what's on your mind and in your heart.
Hey, everybody. I'm Jason Benedict from Berkeley. I wasn't able to be here at the last meeting, but there was some conversation about parking minimums, and I wanted to stand in favor of lower parking minimums for the future. I recognize that parking is our way of life. We have to have a place to land. When we get into Berkeley, people need a place to go. But I recognize that this is, it's a very hotly contended area, but it's also an area where I think we can be bold. We have expert opinions. We have them part of the discussion. I'd encourage us to maybe lean in the lower end of that realm. We have examples of areas where they have parking minimums and what that's done to them. We can look at Midtown Detroit, which is just loaded with it at this point. We have to reach a point where we recognize that parking is required now. It might not be required for the future as we build in with density for the city. So I hope that we will consider, you know, letting the markets decide where parking is required for the future and maybe consider going to a lower limit as we build in our parking requirements. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Benedict. Any other public comment?
Howdy. Bob Sutherland, S-U-T-H-E-R-L-A-N-D. As my wife told me, I was misidentified last time. I guess I don't enunciate very well. My apologies. Absolutely the best DPW in the nation. And regarding the sound issues and so forth that have been bothering that I think some of you have found out about, Emily deserves 15, 20, 25 at a, yeah, boy. I love the concept of making peace, but keeping it is generally more difficult. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sutherland. Any other public comment? Ms. Mitchell, have you received any communication to be entered into the record for this, tonight's meeting?
No, I have not.
Okay, I'm closing public comments then. Ms. Mitchell, please read the items on tonight's consent agenda.
One, approval of the minutes, matter of approving the minutes of the 40th regular city council meeting on Monday, February 24th, 2025. Two, ordinance number O-125, matter of approving the second reading and adoption of an ordinance of the city council of the City of Berkeley, Michigan, to amend Article 2, collection and disposal of Chapter 58, garbage, rubbish, and refuse of the City of Berkeley Code of Ordinances to clarify requirements for containers for garbage versus rubbish and to clarify pickup times for emptied garbage and rubbish containers. Three, proclamation number P-325, matter of receiving a proclamation recognizing Michael McGinnis for his years of service and dedication to the Berkeley Downtown Development Authority.
Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Motion made by Mayor Protam Gavin?
Support.
With support from Councilmember Baker. Are there any corrections or additions? Seeing none, Ms. Mitchell, please call the roll.
Gavin?
Yes.
Patterson?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Black?
Yes, yes.
Dean?
Yes. The consent agenda has passed. Ms. Mitchell, please read item number one on tonight's regular agenda.
Recognitions, presentations, matter of receiving any recognitions or presentations from the consent agenda.
Thank you. I've asked Councilmember Baker to read P-0325. Mr. McGinnis, would you please come up to the podium? If I had a spotlight, I would shine it. But I don't.
Thank you, Your Honor. Hear ye, hear ye! He says it right here. A proclamation of the Council of the City of Berkeley, Michigan honoring Michael McGinnis, former downtown development director. Whereas, Mr. McGinnis served as the executive director of the Berkeley Downtown Development Authority, DDA, from July of 2021 through February of 2025. And during that four-year tenure, he has been instrumental in enhancing the vibrancy and appeal of downtown Berkeley, making it a destination for residents, visitors, and business owners alike. And whereas, Mr. McGinnis spearheaded the creation of several of our most loved community events, including, wait for it, the Buckley events and its accompanying abundance of skeletons, the Berkeley Farmers Market, the immensely popular Berkeley Pride Block Party celebrations each June, Small Business Saturday, and other themed shopping nights, Santa's annual visit to the library, and many other events that foster community engagement and inclusivity. And whereas, Mr. McGinnis significantly enhanced Berkeley's public spaces through the successful implementation of a mural program, the collaborative creation of an art space, and transformative improvements to the downtown streetscape, including enhanced, expanded landscaping, enhanced holiday lighting, and the addition of public amenities such as benches and bicycle racks. By golly. All of these enhancements enriched the city's aesthetic appeal and functionality, fostering a more vibrant and welcoming community. And whereas, under the leadership of Mr. McGinnis, the Downtown Development Authority successfully recruited and welcomed over two dozen new businesses, strengthening the local economy and enriching the diversity of downtown offerings. The same vision and dedication contributed to the creation of the Berkeley Outdoor Social Scene, the BOSS, Social District, which provides residents and visitors aged 21 and over the opportunity to explore downtown Berkeley while enjoying beverages from participating establishments, thereby promoting local businesses and cultivating a dynamic and engaging social atmosphere. And whereas, beyond his professional achievements, Mr. McGinnis is known for his sonorous voice, his exuberant personality, his boundless energy, and his enthusiastic work effort, work ethic, bringing joy to those around him. His habit of bursting into song at the city hall counter brightens the day of colleagues and residents alike, adding a unique charm to the works, workplace, as well as a constant joyful presence around town, always showing up with a smile and his signature decorative flair to support local businesses, chat with residents, and host community events, all of which will be sorely missed. Now, therefore, the Council of the City of Berkeley, Michigan hereby proclaim Section 1. We extend our deepest gratitude to Mike McGinnis for his unwavering dedication, visionary leadership, and impactful contributions to the revitalization and growth of downtown Berkeley. His passion, leadership, and one-of-a-kind personality has left a lasting mark, and we can't wait to see what he does next. Go Pontiac. Um, it's not in here. Section 2, let this proclamation be a reminder of the joy, the energy, and of positive change that Mr. McGinnis brought to our city, proclaimed this third day of March, 2025, at a regular meeting of the Berkeley City Council. Signed, Bridgette Dean, Mayor.
Don't go anywhere. So, DDA Board Vice Chair Desiree Dutcher is here to present something to you from the DDA. So Desiree, come on up to the podium and make your presentation.
You will be sorely missed, and in honor of the time that you have spent here in Berkeley, a photo album of mementos.
Oh, wow.
From your board members.
Bless you. Oh, thank you, everybody.
But don't go anywhere. So, any communication from council? I'm opening the floor here for you.
Well, thank you. I'll, I'll just jump in first. As liaison to DDA, I've had an additional opportunity to see you in action. The way you work with the board so collaboratively and thoughtfully is, is no surprise, and it continues to demonstrate your dedication to the city, to advancing our downtown, and to your leadership, and to the respect that you provide to the board members and to our great community. So for that additional perspective, I'm additionally grateful. Thank you so much.
Likewise, and just the, the passion you have for our city is unmatched and for our business owners and how you can, I don't know how you do it, but you connect them in a way that is very hard to do. So I thank you for that on behalf of our businesses.
Yeah, I'd like to echo my colleagues. Thank you for everything you've done, Mike. You've really been just a positive force for change, and positive change, and really advancing the goals that we have as a city. So a heartfelt thank you, and good luck as you, as you move forward.
So, speaking from a historical perspective, I served on the executive board of the DDA and when Vivian Carmody was here. And I see the foundation that she laid. We had Jennifer Finney come in after, right? And then, you know, taking that further, and then we have Mike McGinnis. And I just look at, when I look at the downtown and I see all of the improvements, all the things that are in place, given the foundation that was laid and how you just took it and ran with it. You've left your mark on Berkeley in such a positive way. I mean, like, every event, it's just, I feel like I'm just moving forward and I'm gonna hear you there, but I know you're not there, but we can't not hear you, and that's such a great thing to leave a community and to people, is your voice and your enthusiasm and your positivity and your unbounding energy. I don't know how you do it, but you do. And so I appreciate the time you spent in Berkeley and for leaving a little bit of you here. I wish you nothing but the best in your future endeavors and especially on November 4th as mayor of Pontiac. So thank you so much, Michael.
Thank you. Wow. I write many city council resolutions. In my hometown, I've never used the word "sonorous" vocabulary choice. This is a great, great honor, and just know that every accolade and every attribute that you are identifying, it was a collaborative effort. So notwithstanding the skeleton crew, Steve Baker pun, skeleton crew here tonight, there's just hundreds of community members that powered all of these initiatives. And the business owners really sacrifice a lot. They put a lot on the line, their finances, their family, their time. And for them to continue to pour back into downtown Berkeley because it truly is a collaborative effort, it is a downtown family. I just want to say thank you from the bottom of my heart to the elected leadership, the staff. I mean, every one of those initiatives that you outlined, the way in which other department directors and, and city managers, past and present, have helped allow that to flourish. My main role in the Downtown Development Authority was the permission structure of yes. If somebody had a great idea, let's get it to yes. And that, though, was driven by so many board members, volunteers, committee volunteers, skeleton decorators. It took, it took a village. And I just want to say thank you for welcoming me so warmly. I had a lot of Pontiac, excuse me, Berkeley friends, Berkeley family, Berkeley ties, so it, it felt seamless, but it was still a strong testament to the caring nature of Berkeley, that they were so up for a good time, up for making improvements, wanting to progress. And I know that's true for the downtown moving forward. I know that's true for the Downtown Development Authority moving forward. The time flew by. We were able to make a really positive impact, and I know that it's really a marathon and a baton handoff, that a strong baton was handed to me, and collectively, we, we ran a length, and now the baton is handed off to others to continue this push. So thank you to everyone that made, that makes downtown Berkeley so special. I will not soon forget it, and I won't be a stranger. And I can't wait to see how it continues to grow and positively resonate throughout the community and the region. Thank you very, very much.
Thank you so much.
We have your proclamation.
Councilmember Black, I'm sorry, did you want to add anything?
Yeah, Madam Mayor, um, never liked Mike McGinnis. I'm glad he's leaving. Better for it. As soon as he leaves, we can all really say how we feel. No, uh, Mike was, I, I, I think if you sit down and have a conversation with Mike McGinnis, you'll never forget it. I had the opportunity to do that at my very first holiday gathering at, at your house, Madam Mayor, and I think the hardest thing in this world to be is yourself. And the thing that I love most and I'll miss most about Mike is I know that every interaction is going to be genuine. I know that every word out of his mouth is going to be honest. I know that every question is coming from a place of, of curiosity about, about you. I genuinely felt like when I talked to him and we really just got a chance to talk, that he really was curious just about me. Some of the questions were hilarious, but that's, that's Mike. And man, I don't, I don't know what the future holds, elections are elections, but I just definitely feel like whatever he does next, he's going to be outstanding because of who he is and the light that he shines. And the last thing I'll say is, I think the thing that makes Berkeley such an amazing city is, is passion. And the passion that he brings in terms of his work ethic and, and his honesty is something that we're going to miss. So I hope that whoever is next will fill those shoes to the best of their ability. You will be missed. I love the sweater with the sport coat game, too. A lot of people can't pull that off. You're doing it quite nicely. Now get out of here so we can say bad stuff about you.
Thank you.
Thank you, and I virtually shake your hand and salute you, Councilmember Black.
Mike, what's Greg's birthday?
Thank you. Okay, Ms. Mitchell, please read item number two on tonight's regular agenda.
Presentation, matter of receiving a presentation on ready to serve you at www.berkleymi.gov.
Welcome, Director Flora.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and members of council. I'm excited to be here this evening to share a little bit more about this project. Next slide, please. So I launched BerkeleyMI.gov a few weeks ago to move to a more intuitive and inviting website. The number one goal with this new website is ultimately to make it easier to find the information that you need. Of course, our staff is always ready and happy to help you if you need it. Seems like the microphone is not working. Oh, there we go. Okay. So of course, our staff is always ready and happy to help if you need it, but we do hope that this tool helps to empower our residents to complete tasks and find information from wherever they are. So that will allow them to work around their busy schedules rather than just business hours at city hall. Can you all hear me okay?
No, it's, okay.
Maybe try Victoria's?
Yeah. I don't know how far it will go, but.
So aside from the updates to the overall site, there are a few new additions to our online offerings. You can apply to many permits.
It doesn't, it sounds odd.
I think, um, I think she went to go get them.
Okay. Would you like me, would you like me to wait until?
Please. Yes, yes, thank you.
Testing, testing. Check, check, check. Check, check, check.
Okay, testing again. Thank you, Chris.
Oh, it's so just in here?
I don't want it to sound.
Oh, do you want to try that one?
These might seem to be working okay.
Let me see. This one's off.
I feel like they're working fine, but it's up to you.
Okay, I'll try Claire's.
Yeah, I mean.
Can you mute the wireless, Cindy?
Okay, so let's try this one. I think, I think this sounds a little bit better. I agree. Although now I feel like it's not working.
Right, I feel like it went out.
Oh, boy.
I guess. Testing, testing. How's this one sound?
Like it starts?
Does this sound okay? Is mine bad? Would you like me to wait a few more moments to see if we can get this going?
I think so. Oh, I'm, I'm on. You know what? Is it sounding normal? So get closer to the mic, please.
Okay.
But it's very distorted.
Go ahead. Yeah, it could be.
I will, I'll stay at this seat. Thank you, Councilmember Black, for allowing me to sit in your seat. So aside from the updates to the overall site, I just want to highlight that there are a few new additions to our online offerings. You can apply to many permits from our Community Development Department online, and you can also verify your water service line material online. These items are accessible from each respective department's page, which you can find by navigating to the government heading on the homepage. The new website also reflects our updated branding. You'll notice that the color scheme and the graphics are based on our newer branding and logo. While, of course, we will always use the city seal, and it's a very important part of our identity, it is used in different cases than the updated branding and logo. You'll still see the city seal in cases including legal documents, formal city business, and official city structures like this city council dais. The logo and branding are meant to be used in cases exactly like our website, so it's more eye-catching, and it helps to build our city's brand. We use it in cases like the website, social media, and promotional materials. There is more information about the city seal versus the logo right on the homepage of the website. So next, I have a short video that introduces the new site, so we will play that for you now. When your city's website is intuitive and inviting, it's easy to find what you need right at your fingertips. You can pay your city or county bill, browse and apply for permits by department, and keep up with the latest news around town. BerkeleyMI.gov is the digital door to city hall that's never closed. Take a few minutes to stop by and fill out the website feedback form if you can't find something or have questions. Want to receive all the latest Berkeley updates straight to your inbox? Be sure to sign up for e-news at the bottom of each page. Browse upcoming city events, check for holiday trash pickup delays, and don't forget to check out the helpful information tab at the top of the page. It's all waiting for you at BerkeleyMI.gov. So that was just a video that was used to promote the launch, and it highlighted some of the features, so I wanted to share that today. So with this new site, we have moved to a .gov domain, and this domain helps us to identify official trusted information. It's important to be as clear as possible that crucial information is coming from a verified, accurate source. This domain helps with that because anyone can pay for a .com or a .org domain, but only government can register for a .gov domain. So going along with that, someone acting in bad faith who might be hoping to trick someone else into clicking a fake link cannot create anything that uses the .gov domain. This helps to provide an extra layer of trust and security that the information you'll be accessing and the links to do things like pay your bill, for example, yay, the mic is better, is actually officially from the city. Just wanted to highlight that we have not actually had any issues with security, but in this day and age, it's much better to be safe than sorry. And the .gov domain also increases security and searchability of our online presence. Next slide, please. So no matter how much testing is done, the nature of a website, especially one with this much information, is that there will be lots of ongoing improvements. I really rely on the community to share when they're having trouble with something. Once the initial launch period is complete and all the bugs have been worked out, each department will be responsible for sharing their updates with me on a monthly basis, which then ultimately will move to a bimonthly or even quarterly basis. I did want to share one example of these ongoing improvements, which is that a shortcut to get to the library page has been added to the homepage after the launch. This was a direct result of lots of community feedback asking to make it easier to find. Next slide, please. So it is extremely helpful when users provide feedback if they can't find something or if a page is not loading correctly. Thank you to those community members, council members, and staff members who have shared their questions and issues. A feedback form is located at the top of the homepage and at the bottom of each page, and this is the best way to ensure that I know of the issue. As the city's sole communications team member, keeping things organized in this way helps me to keep updates on track. If someone has questions that go beyond what the feedback form can help with, you can email me at communications@berkeleymi.gov. Next slide, please. Thank you for allowing me the opportunity and the patience with all these microphone issues to spend some time talking about the new site. I'm very proud of the work that's been done and very excited for this huge step forward for the city.
Well, we're very grateful, Director Flora, oh, boy, for all the work that you've put into this. I know this was a heavy lift. In the city, we were without a communications director for a solid six months, and you are a department of one. So I appreciate your diligence and perseverance to this project, and you should be commended. And I'm, I hope you're as proud of you as we are, and we look forward to, you know, a seamless interface and being able to have this information at our fingertips. And I know you did mention that you're still working some things out, as is normal anytime you launch a new website, a new anything. So, you know, that'll take time, but I'm glad that you're getting the feedback that you need. So thank you.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Likewise, it looks great. It's totally refreshed and it's user-friendly, so thank you for all the time. I know it was a lot of time, a lot of hours put into this, so thank you.
Thank you.
Just echoing my colleagues as well, thank you for every, all the work you put into it. Certainly was a heavy lift.
I appreciate that.
Yeah, echoing again, yeah, thank you. I like how this helps complement the other various channels that you operate in as well with the social media and all the other things. So you do have lots of place to spin, and I appreciate the effort on this particular one. And also thanks to staff and the people that, that provide you with the content, right? Because you've created this amazing infrastructure, this amazing vessel that the information can be, can be shared in. And it's up to the departments and, and the volunteers to help provide that information to you so it can be presented. So thanks to everybody for helping make this happen, and instrumentally, thanks to you for, for creating this space so that, that we can more effectively communicate.
Thank you, everyone. I really appreciate all of that.
Councilmember Black?
Oh, sorry.
No, I've had the misfortune of consulting on this in a prior life, so I know how difficult it is. Every time you think you got it right, there's something else, and then you tackle that, and it just almost seems like it's a never-ending string of holes on a, on a boat where you plug one hole and you got another hole and another. So I, I know that there were some days where you probably thought like, man, am I ever gonna get this to fruition? But, you know, you worked hard, and you did, and I am extremely proud of you. I get a chance to work with you on the Committee for Engagement and Technology, so I, I know how passionate you are about things being done right. And this looks absolutely amazing, and that is a huge testament to you. So great job, and get out of my chair.
And thanks again for your patience with the microphone issues. Hopefully this gets worked out later this meeting.
Thank you. Ms. Mitchell, please read item number three on tonight's regular agenda.
Motion number M-625, matter of considering a special land use request from applicant Christina Del Piso, who is requesting approval for the occupation of 1818 Mortenson to be used as a family daycare home for seven to 12 children in the R1D Single Family Residential District on the east side of Mortenson, east of Princeton.
Is there a motion to approve M-0625?
So moved.
Motion made by Mayor Protam Gavin?
Support.
With. With support from Councilmember Black. Yes.
Better ask first.
Do you want to toss this directly to Director Kapalansky?
Yes, I'll toss it over to Director Kapalansky. I will also say, Councilmember Henan is watching from home and providing feedback, and weirdly enough, apparently it sounds better at home than it does in here, so.
Okay, I'm just.
Can I power cycle PA for a second? Turn it off, turn it back on. Amuse yourself.
So you take a little break, I think.
We can't understand anything being said.
Thank you for pointing that out. Yeah, we need a musical.
Do we have to motion a recess or just?
Can we just pause, or do I have to? Do we have to motion something? We can, okay.
Yeah.
Those new mixers.
I know, right?
I mean, they were fine when we watched.
Yeah, they were great, they were loud, they were.
Yeah, I don't know what happened.
Clarence comes through fantastically.
Hello, hello? Any better?
No.
No, almost worse.
Does anybody sign?
It's localized to this room at least with the speakers.
Right, they can hear at home.
Yes.
Yes. But you can't hear in here.
Distorted.
Okay.
That's not us, right?
Well, the only thing about that is, this is how it feeds to the live stream. So we can't, we can't turn them off? Oh.
Is that what he's trying to do?
Yeah, maybe.
When we first walked in, it was so loud, you could, like, it was picking up in the hallway. That's how loud it was. It's so weird that that phone works and it rings and.
Right. Testing. Hello, hello, still staticky.
What if we turn the speakers off since it sounds a little home and it's just ringing up to everybody else? Okay.
Testing, one, two. That sounds really good.
Yeah.
You guys good, you can hear it?
Can you hear us out there?
Okay. Okay, great.
Great suggestion, because he turned off the speakers and so we can hear it.
Perfect. Ms. Mitchell, please, no, where are we? Ms. Van Vleek, Ms. Kapalansky.
Yes.
I'm back.
So council will recall that this particular item appeared before you in a similar fashion some time ago. This is for a daycare for seven to 12 children at Mortenson, 1818 Mortenson, to be specific. This particular use is a special land use in residential districts. I do want to note, and I know we talked about this previously, that the state of Michigan says that this is a residential use. So we, as a city, are required to either have it as a principal permitted use or as a special land use, but it is considered a residential use of property per the state of Michigan. In this particular case, a request came before you previously. Council denied that request. The applicant has resubmitted a new request with additional conditions proposed, and those conditions have necessitated that it's a brand-new application. So we're reviewing this as if it's a brand-new application. You should not take into account the previous public comment. The only way that that would come into play is that that's how the applicants come up with the conditions that they're offering at this time period. So any public comment that you would consider as part of this was the public comment received when this case was advertised via email or letter, or items that were talked about at the Planning Commission meeting. I do want to get into the standards for special land use that the council should consider, and I'm going to just briefly go through each one. They are listed out in my review letter as well. In order to approve the special land use, you would need to find that all of these standards have been met. If you were to deny the special land use request, you would need to find that at least one of those standards has not been met, and any motions should cite either approval or denial that the standards either have been met. If it's denial, which motion or which standard has not been met, and then preferably also include how that standard has not been met. So I will just briefly go through each of these. One, the proposed use will promote the use of land in a socially and economically desirable manner. And I included some commentary on these from staff's recommendation in my review. Two, the proposed use is necessary for the public convenience at that location. Three, the proposed use is compatible with adjacent land uses. Four, the proposed use is designed so that the public health, safety, and welfare shall be protected. And then lastly, the proposed use will not cause injury to other property in the neighborhood. So in my review, I did recommend approval of the request, and there's some analysis for each of those standards as to why I'm recommending approval. The Planning Commission heard this item and recommended denial, citing that the application did not meet standard four, designed so that the public health, safety, and welfare shall be protected. I think that's about everything. I did neglect to mention the two conditions the applicant's proposing at the beginning of my introduction. One is that they would limit pickups and drop-offs to Princeton only. So this is a corner lot at Mortenson in Princeton. And two, that six of the 12 children under the applicant's care would be walkers and would not be permitted to be dropped off or picked up via car. So that's all I have for you. I'm happy to answer any questions that you have. The applicant and her attorney are here as well.
Okay. Any questions or discussion from council at this point?
Not at this point.
Okay. Councilmember Black? Are you good up to this point? And then we'll hear from the applicant.
Yeah, I'm very good.
Okay. Let's try it, if they're thinking that it's good. Good.
So far.
Yes.
We can't, can they hear him?
They can hear on the video, but speak loudly for those of us in the room.
My name is Kerry Pettit. I'm a shareholder in Williams William Grant and Fontip Law Firm in Michigan. I'm here representing Will Seagull of Berkeley. And I'm the special official of Del Piso. We're here today on the new application for special land use approval for a up to 12, up to 12 child group childcare facility. I have to say, this is the first time that I've ever shared a podium with this guy. As indicated, the council denied a similar application last year, 2024. We're before you with a brand-new application, which has new additional conditions. We strongly believe the amended application meets the requirements of Section 138, 653 of your ordinances, as well as in particular, standard number four, which was apparently the principal concern of the Planning Commission. Applicant owns the property located at 1818 Mortenson. She has obtained a license from the state and is currently successfully operating and serving six children at the facility with no negative impact on local health, safety, and welfare. The applicant's primary state licensee, Stacy Matuski, who is here with us as well today, resides there on a full-time basis with her infant child as tenants in the property. The applicant also recently, I should mention, installed a privacy fence in the backyard. I'm sure council is aware that there is a tremendous need for quality licensed daycare, both locally, statewide, and nationally. Applicant is a person that has brought that quality daycare need to various communities in the state of Michigan. In particular, locally, she has three successful operations in Bloomfield Township, successful operations in Beverly Hills, Gross Point Park, and Livonia. There have been, I can report, no adverse impacts on any of those communities, and they have been welcomed by those communities. In fact, those communities have up to a two-year waiting period, this two-year waiting list from families who wish to fulfill their childcare needs at Little Seedlings. Little Seedlings, excuse me. We believe the same type of need exists here, and it's been already successfully demonstrated by the fact that Little Seedlings has been successfully operating for six months. In fact, they just received their six-month inspection from the state, and they pass with flying colors. So what I'd like to do is go through the five standards that are required under the ordinance. I'll incorporate by reference our application, but let me briefly go through those, and I want to place particular emphasis on standard four. Standard one, the proposed use will promote the use of land in a socially and economically desirable manner. A group home childcare is a residential use of property according to the state. The home would continue to be used as a residence while providing young families with loving, quality, licensed childcare, which is much needed in the city of Berkeley or in the Berkeley community. The proposed use, number two, is necessary for public convenience at that location. Again, there is a tremendous need for childcare in this community, state of Michigan, and nationally. Young families, we understand, are driving to communities outside of Berkeley to find their childcare. Number three, the proposed use is compatible with adjacent land uses. A group home, as mentioned, is considered a residential use of property in the state of Michigan. Number four, the proposed use is designed so that the public health, safety, and welfare shall be protected. So the plan that's been presented as part of this application is that, number one, all parking will be restricted to Princeton, the side street, where there's probably at least room for like six cars. Now, keep in mind, people just basically drop off their kids, they don't park and stay there, and they drop off their kids at different timeframes. But there's more than adequate parking on Princeton to alleviate any additional congestion on Mortenson. Pickups and drop-offs will be from Princeton. In addition, and I think this is important, the additional six children that we're seeking permission to add will be required to be walkers from the neighborhood. So consequently, there'll be no additional traffic that would have any impact beyond that, which is currently, of the currently allowed, six children. Number five, the proposed use will not cause injury to other property in the neighborhood. The house, as indicated, will remain a residential property. It has remained a residential property and will continue to be cared for, exceeding state of Michigan licensing requirements. Speaking about the last six months, which I think is important to give consideration to, there's been no negative impact to the area community in that current location. In fact, there's been no negative impact in any of the locations that Little Seedlings is located. Again, we have not received any complaints up to this point. And again, the fact that there be no negative impact, it would be particularly true in light of the proposed modifications, limiting traffic to six cars that are already, that could already be permitted there, and only, parking only on Princeton Street, which will have negligible effect, if any, on traffic. The Planning Commission's original concerns relating to Mortenson, which under the revised proposal, would not now be impacted by the operation proposed used at all. Applicant, I should mention, will also strictly monitor the daily parking and pickup-drop-off process to ensure compliance. Again, the property is fully licensed, it's well-kept, it's nicely landscaped, professionally operated, and licensee occupied. Respectfully, taking that all into account, the applicant respectfully requests that the application be approved. Ms. Del Piso is here, she would also like to make a few comments if it's acceptable to the council.
Hello, I'm Christina Del Piso. Nice to see you all again. I wanted to touch on a few points that maybe weren't clear when I've spoken to you in the past. So the reason why I, you know, it's been brought up that, you know, like, I am having a hard time, you know, accepting the answer now, and I want to give you a little background on this because it has been suggested that I didn't do my due diligence. And although it doesn't matter, because this is the process, I want you to know that I did, in fact, do my due diligence. And I think the city can confirm that, that I, before this house was purchased, I went to the city, I asked them if this was allowed, and they said, not only is it allowed, but you don't have to go through this process because we, you know, this obviously isn't our first time opening up a home childcare in the city of Gross Point. We went through all of this before we even purchased the home. And so, you know, I knew that there could be, you know, issues leading up to this, but I was assured that in the city of Berkeley, that there are no, no, there were no stipulations to running a home daycare, a family home daycare. So I went ahead and I purchased the home. Oh, I even brought the address to them. Is this a good home? It's on a corner lot? Yes, yes, that's fine. There are no, you know, there's no reason that you can't open this. Okay, so I purchased the home. And after we purchased the home, we were told we needed to put in a privacy fence. So $10,000, fine, you know, the cost of doing business. After that, we were told that we needed to, that home daycares in the past haven't been going through the correct process, and they need to change things, which I understand that, you know, you know, these things happen, and that changes need to be made, and sometimes they're uncomfortable. So, you know, we went ahead and applied for a special use permit, and, but I did want to explain to you that I did, in fact, go to the city. And as you can imagine, money was invested, we redid the house, we, you know, we purchased this home on the word that we could open a home daycare, like it's been done in the past in Berkeley. So I didn't want you to think that I haphazardly was just elbowing my way into the city, which I think has been, you know, I think that some people have thought that that has been the case, and it certainly wasn't. We did our due diligence. So we have poured a significant amount of money in our home, in this home, and this is a labor of love for me. Little Seedlings is definitely, you know, something that, you know, is close to my heart. My husband, you know, is fine supporting me, but at a certain point, you know, we have an investment here, and the initial investment was based on the fact that we would open a group home childcare. So, that aside. So the main concern was traffic and parking. We have been open for six months. We are not aware of any complaints that have been brought to the city about us. The city certainly hasn't contacted us. If there have been complaints, we have been absolutely all over our parents and our families about not parking on Mortenson, and they haven't. And when they do park, they park on Princeton. Since we are a corner lot, from Mortenson to our driveway and across the street, from Mortenson to our neighbor's driveway, there are six available parking spots, back to back, probably, you know, with some extra room there. So there is ample parking on Princeton without bothering anyone. And we have good relations with our neighbors. After our first initial meeting, we, you know, I brought cookies to the neighbors, many of the neighbors. A lot of them who had initial complaints aren't here today. So I'm happy, I'm happy to see that. We've closed down our daycare on snowy days because we, we've been so worried about cars being in the street, even momentarily on a snow emergency. We don't want to, you know, impede the snowplow, so we have just closed the daycare on days of extreme snow. We were visited by Michigan Licensing on February 12th, and we had no violations, which, you know, their job is to tell us what we're doing wrong, not what we're doing right. And usually, when the state comes, and if you look at the licensing reports for all our area daycares, they find something. And Shelby has been just doing an amazing job, so they found no violations. So our proposal is that we, we would like to make our group home, or our home daycare, a group home daycare that would be open to 12 children and would allow for another teacher. So our operating hours could be like all of our other homes, from seven to five. Shelby's alone in the house, so we have limited hours because a 10-hour workday is too long for one individual with that many children, even if it's in ratio for the state. And we would like to make all of these six children, children in the community that walk to the home. And I would like you to know that in some of our other homes, that has naturally happened. Like in Bloomfield, we naturally have the kids from the neighborhood because they know there's a daycare right on Darcy, and why would they go anywhere else when we're licensed? We're loving. We're loving, we're cheaper than big centers, and we just become the neighborhood daycare. So, it's very feasible that we would have six or more children just within walking distance from the home. The argument has been made that it is unsafe for children to walk in the cold. And as an early childhood professional, and as a mother, and as a Michigander, I can tell you that that is not true. In Norway, children sleep in the cold. It is not unhealthy to bundle up your little one in their snowsuit and walk three houses down. And that happens every day in some of our other homes. What is not reasonable is, what is not super safe, is bundling up a baby in a snowsuit, putting them in a car. And, you know, like, when we're talking about, you know, it being cold, it's not safe to put them in a car seat in their snowsuit. So, in many ways, it's easier for a mom to just put them in their snowsuit and walk them three doors down than to put them in a car. So, let's see if I hit on everything. I'm kind of nervous up here. Sorry, guys. This isn't what I typically do every day. Berkeley's a walking community. I think that that falls in line with your vision for Berkeley, and one of the reasons why we picked Berkeley, because it's a family community. Oh, also, we're open to the idea of having this special use permit reviewed by you in six months. So, I think that, you know, we mentioned that before, that if you wanted to call us back, and this is a temporary special use permit, to see how it goes, we would be open to that. Let's see, is there anything else? I guess that the last thing that I want to add is this idea that children belong in these big commercial daycares. And I think that that was mentioned last time as well, that, you know, we have these big daycares in these commercial buildings, and I, you know, we all want to work from home, and then we send our six-week-olds to these big industrial buildings with high turnover, under fluorescent lights, when we have, you know, really, the, what childcare should be, which is, you know, a neighbor, a family member, someone that is in the community, you know, we have this option. And so, you know, not just for me, but for anyone in the future, any moms in the future that are looking to open up a home daycare in the city of Berkeley, this is very, you know, deeply embedded in family values and a community that values families. We want our babies in loving homes and not necessarily in these big, these big buildings that are run by big corporations, in my opinion. I see that they're superior. Okay, do you have any questions for me?
Questions or comments from council?
Do you want to go?
Yeah, I just have a quick question, or a couple of questions. So, and this was touched on a little bit by your attorney as well, but we're really concerned on, from, I have a question about, of course, the parking. And so, I just want to know, is there, do you believe there is room for off-street parking for all employees? And for the, of course, the pickup and drop off as well? You touched on it a little bit, but...
Yeah, so Shelby actually can, because it's a corner lot, she can apply for a permit to park in the street, and she doesn't. She parks in the garage. There, sorry, did you want me to have?
There's driveway parking.
There is driveway parking. But honestly, like, on Princeton, there are six spots. That's not even considering Mortenson. When we purchased the house, we thought that Mortenson would be the most logical place. But pushing that aside, Princeton, we have six spots that people can park and comfortably walk their child to daycare without having to worry about cars rushing by, or, you know, and if you know where this house is, if you've ever driven by it, hopefully, I mean, I've never driven by it, and I drive by it often, it's mine. I have never seen a pileup of cars there, never. In fact, you know, today I was driving by and I saw a pileup of cars, you know, on every other street, but I did not see one on Princeton. So, if that, did that answer your question? Okay.
Counsel member Black?
Sure, thank you, Your Honor. And thank you for the presentation and your thoughtful insights into the approach that you're taking. I certainly feel the passion that you bring to your business, and I'm very happy that it's been successful with the six that you have today. I think that's great. I, too, have been wondering about the additional staff that might come in and where they might park. You mentioned one additional employee, so you mean at most, you'd only have two adults in there?
Yeah, so that's the licensing requirement, one adult per six children.
For six, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, and then...
And usually, the way that, the way that the day is structured, usually, you know, like, because they trickle in, they trickle in, and then our first teacher is there, which is Shelby. And then, you know, our second teacher comes when we typically get six children, like, we kind of, we know everyone's schedule, like, after a while, we know when people come in. And they can also see it on our Brightwheel app, like, how many kids are in. So, our second teacher always comes in before number six come, you know, walks through the door. And, you know, usually, it's an hour later, and they leave an hour earlier because kids get picked up, you know, staggered as well.
Oh, thank you for that. My other two, just question, thought, concern-y type things at the moment, the enforceability does seem interesting as well, you know, with the, with the walking. I love the idea of somebody walking three houses down, but who's to say somebody that lives out of the community or far away, they choose to walk, park like a block over or a half a block over and then walk, you know, they, would they really be walking, or they're driving to get there and then walking to try to minimize the, you know, that kind of thing? It's just a hypothetical, but that's just kind of what I'm thinking about.
No, I hear what you're saying. You know, we, I wish you could see the inside workings of our daycare. Everything that, like, parents that pick up late, they get charged because, you know, like, we, our staff is, only has so many hours. If they park in front of the house, they get a message, "Do not park on Mortenson, you need to park on Princeton." We are all over these parents because we know that them following the rules is, you know, us being good neighbors and us, you know, like, we are all over them. I can't express that enough. I just wish that you could see, like, the inside, you know...
Well, the other thing I can add is the walkers are going to be from the neighborhood, and they can control that because they're going to know where they, where they live when they sign up.
That is true, but I do see what you're saying, like, if someone were to want to just drive. But if we caught wind of that, we would stop that so quick because the consequence is the validity of our special use permit. We don't want that pulled. In the same way that, you know, if you go to a liquor store and you sell to an underage kid, you're not going to want to do that because your liquor license is on the line. This is, you know, it's a poor business decision to allow people to break the rules.
That's eloquently put. I do just have concerns about the enforceability of that, despite your best efforts. And my last thought at the moment has to do with those six spots on Princeton. Those are, you know, public spots, and there are people who live on Princeton. And they may have needs to use those spots as well. And so, I'm not putting 100% faith that all six of those spots will be available at any given time as you, as you and the rest of the neighborhood around you continues to operate their daily functions. So, that's just a concern, that's kind of...
So, there's never been, there's never been a time when all six spots have been taken. In fact, I would think that only one or two cars are there for a moment or two at any given time. But the reason why I said that we had six spots is because we, there are six spots with only inconveniencing one other neighbor, which would be, you know, across Princeton, which also has Mortenson parking, if that makes sense, you know? But we've never, the parking situation now is exactly the same as it would be if we were granted six more children that are walkers. Not one thing would change because we wouldn't have additional cars. So, if traffic isn't an issue now, it won't be an issue, you know, if we get approved, if that makes sense.
Yeah, and again, that gets back to the enforceability question, so, but I appreciate your responses.
Yeah, and I think the enforcement, you know, that question can be asked with any business, you know, how do you enforce it? Well, you know, you guys pull the strings on that. If we don't, if we're a problem, you pull our special use permit. It's, that's the whole point of, right? The special use permit? Like, you can retract that. And I, am I wrong?
I would have to ask. Yeah, I mean...
I don't think it's quite that simple.
Oh.
Yeah, it's not like, oh, sorry.
That was my...
Turn off the lights.
I guess the point is, is that there are no, there have been no issues in six months.
There have been no issues in six months under the current circumstances. The additional six children will be from the neighborhood. That is easily controlled. And I think, as Ms. Del Pizzo just indicated, she's all over people if they even begin to break the rules. Also, I think it's important, she never had six people coming at the same time. This is basically people filtering in at different hours, drop off their children, they don't stay there, they leave. So, to the extent people are parking there, it's for a relatively short period of time, and they filter in and out. And at this point, with the six children who do drive, there's no issues whatsoever. And assuming these six more with walkers who aren't driving should not be a problem at all. I appreciate the enforceability issue. And in some ways, it's a matter of faith. And I think what is very important here is Ms. Del Pizzo has been successful, without complaint, in numerous communities. She will be successful here, I believe, if you can, if she can add on those additional six children.
Counsel member Black, did you have any questions or comments?
No, I have no doubt that Ms. Del Pizzo can be effective here. She's demonstrated an outstanding business model. The question is, is it a fit? And my question to Ms. Del Pizzo would be, when you came to us before, there was significant, there was significant concern from your neighbors. So, you know, what can you tangibly show in terms of support that you didn't before?
Sure, yeah. So, you know, before, although this is a new application, before, there was a petition. Mr. Robert Fost started a petition. And I think today, you'll see that there are fewer concerns from the neighbors. We have befriended many neighbors. In addition, you know, the Facebook groups, I, you know, I'm not, I'm not on the big one because I'm not a resident, but I am on the other one. And I, if you're on those Facebook groups as well, I'm sure that you've also noticed that there has been a softening after, after people have seen that we really aren't interfering with anyone else's daily life or property values, and we really are good neighbors. We care a great deal.
I have voiced these groups for a reason that we'll get into here in this meeting, but I do, for me, I would, again, if you have supporters here, if you were able to turn people around from where they were, this would be a great opportunity for them to speak forward because, again, you're telling me that you've changed minds when I would love for you to show me that you have changed minds.
Yeah, I mean, this is our seventh meeting in Berkeley, and I have brought, there have been many people that have wrote letters and many people that have spoken in support. I know our neighbor Kathy came last time, and she's spoken in support of us. And, you know, I, but I have a hard time calling people out to these long meetings over and over and over again. But I do think that the lack of, you know, a mob, you know, against me does speak volumes to how we have softened, you know, our image has softened in the community.
Ms. Kapalansky.
I might be able to provide a little bit of clarity. So, you'll remember with the previous application, there were quite a few people here at council. There were even more people at Planning Commission the last time that a similar application was considered. I will note that at the last Planning Commission meeting for this new application, we had, I think, less than five comments via, either in writing or people that appeared at the meeting, that were opposed to this. And that's all contained in the Planning Commission minutes, so you can see what everyone had to say. I think there were a couple of supporters, too. But the number of public comments did go down, and this followed the same noticing requirements that we did the first time around. So, everyone within 300 feet got a mailer, there are signs posted on the property as well, and there's a notice in the newspaper, which is what we do for every public, but if you needed a data point, there is that.
Thank you. Ms. Del Pizzo, I have a question about you. You mentioned about conditional, like, coming back before us in six months, say. So, how would you pose that to your incoming walkers? Like, you can be here for six months, maybe more, but, so, I guess, what would that look like?
Yeah, well, it would be, I mean, I would, I would be very honest with my, I mean, I'd be very honest, like, listen, everybody, you better behave because we're going back in six months. And, you know, that really is how I operate Little Seedlings. I mean, you know, these are the stipulations. This is what we need to do to be successful in this community, and so, we need everyone's participation. And if, you know, if we have an issue, we have such a long waiting list that we ask, you know, families to leave if they, if it's not a good fit, if they can't follow our rules, or if they're inconsiderate of our neighbors. We don't tolerate that. The stakes are too high. It's not just their child having care, it's 12 children.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions, comments from council? Okay. Yeah, I'm going to open this up to a public comment now. Hi.
I'm Colleen Eastep. I'm at 1721 Princeton, and everyone keeps talking about how wonderful we're parking on Princeton, and it's not wonderful. And this is probably the third time that I've heard Mrs. Del Pizzo say that she's come around and given cookies and talked to the neighbors. I'm right there, I'm always outside in the yard. No one has ever come and talked to me, and yes, people aren't happy, but the first Planning Commission meeting we had, everyone stood up and we had a petition, and it didn't matter. The Planning Commission pushed it through anyway. So, then everyone feels disheartened as if our voices aren't being heard. I'd also like to go through the standards. The first, I want to hop around, though. The first one is the proposed use is compatible with adjacent land uses. According to Michigan, the state of Michigan, the statute 722.11 of MCL Child Care Organizations, which states, "Private home means a private residence in which the licensee permanently resides which residency is not contingent upon caring for children." So, my question is, is if she wasn't allowed to have this childcare at all, would Shelby be allowed to live there? No, that is the business model, that the person who is giving the childcare is allowed to live there. And it states right there, "Which residency is not contingent upon caring for children." So, I don't know how we got to this point to begin with. And that was the one of, what, the third standard? Then, the next standard is that the proposed use will promote the use of land in a socially and economically desirable manner. It's so vastly different from all the other homes there that you can't use that as a comparison. So, the economic standard has not been met because there's no other economies going on in that house. As well as the social aspect isn't, that matter, that isn't met because as, they're not a family, they're not coming out and meeting us, they're behind the privacy fence, which is fine, but that's why the social aspect is not met. And then, the proposed use is necessary for public convenience at that location? No proof of that need has been provided. They say over and over and over that childcare, it's very slim, it's very sparse. There is a website called childcaredeserts.org, and in my letter, I sent a screenshot of it, but here you can see that the orange is scarce, the blue means it's plentiful and adequate. This is Woodward, this is Coolidge. There are so many other childcare units that have space. So, that argument is not valid. Then, the proposed use will not cause injury to other property in the neighborhood. We've got added strain of increased trash, which will bring on the rats, and you've got the elevated noise levels of all these children and all these cars. And again, parking on Princeton is not desirable. I'm going to be parking on Princeton. I have friends and family who are coming by and parking, and we can't. I've taken pictures...
You're at your three limit, three minutes. No, it's three minutes.
I've taken pictures of cars dropping our kids that are parking on the wrong side.
Thank you. Any other public comment?
Hey there, my name is Marco Del Pizzo. I own the house with Christina on 1818 Mortenson. At the zoning meeting, or whatever the last meeting we were at, there was Ms. Lisa Kempner who made a comment about turning us, turning that house into a group home, an adult group home. And then she abruptly ended that, and that was the end of the conversation. We purchased the home with the intent to open up a child daycare there, and that's exactly what we plan on doing. But if that doesn't work out, there are definitely other options. I can do that, which would... I can do that, which she brought up, the adult group home. We definitely can do that. And there'll only be four people that would stay in that house. The average stay of people reacclimating themselves to society is two to five years in a house like this. So it'd be four people running in and out of that house, not six or 12. So that would definitely help. But regardless, this is, I don't understand the parking. Public parking is public parking. You can park wherever you like. I can park down the street. I can park out front. It doesn't matter where I park. It's public parking. There's construction going on down the street. They park wherever they want. No one complained about that, right? It happens nonstop. There's always something. There's lawn care. There's, there's a constant flow of traffic in and out of neighborhoods that there's nothing you can do about. That's just the way it is, right? Mailman, landscape companies, construction companies. It goes on and on and on. So it's really hard to judge who or what can park where. I don't know. I think that's about it. But also, my wife here has been referred to as a money grubber, which is, it's insulting. I don't know why they have to go for throat like that. She's just trying to run a business that helps people out in the community. She loves it. She's not a very good businesswoman, but she really likes the job itself. So, but that's about it. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. And any other public comment?
Hi. My name is Shelby Matuski. I live at 1818 Mortenson. I'm the licensee at Little Seedlings of Berkeley. I just want to say how much I appreciate the Del Pizos for not only giving me a job that I love, but also a beautiful home for my family to live in. We have really enjoyed living in Berkeley and running Little Seedlings has been so fun. My husband and I have enjoyed the walkable community of Berkeley. We've taken our baby girl for a walk almost every day that we've been home, and the weather has been reasonable. I try to be friendly and stop to talk to any neighbors I see. But sometimes with a baby, I have to keep walking to keep her from crying. All the families that we've enrolled have been so cooperative in understanding of any parking regulations. We asked them to please not park on Mortenson as it is a little tight. And every family has respected that every day we've been open. Families have all been parking along the side of our house or across Princeton in front of the neighbor's house. And I spoke with the homeowners across the street, and they did not have any issue with the parents dropping off or picking up there. I do believe that we could continue to run issue-free if we were to expand to 12 children. The neighbors that I have spoken with have had no complaints, and everyone has been friendly to myself, my daughter, and my husband. Little Seedlings is committed to following any and all rules all the time. I fully believe that this is an ethical company to work for. And I trust that the Del Pizos have their employees and the families they care for's best interest at heart. Before coming to Little Seedlings in 2022, I previously did work at several large center daycares. And I can truly say that home daycares help both the children and the teachers to thrive. Little Seedlings has been the best company I have worked for, and thank you for your time.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Questions or further discussion from council? Councilmember Baker?
Thank you, Your Honor. Again, thank you. And the additional commentary and dialogue was certainly informative as well. And I am pleased to hear that things are working out well with the six. And I appreciate the care with which you mind the kids and good things like that. And I'm glad to hear that six is working. I don't think the six is in contention. I think the concept of doubling that comes with some questions and some assumptions that I'm not sure I'm going to take tonight. Just wanted to express that. I think, you know, I'm very happy with how it's going, that you've made, you know, worked it out with the neighbors and have a positive experience in that way. I'm just not yet sure about doubling that and the degree to which the walk only will actually be walkers only and things like that. And then, of course, the impact across the street and the other parts of town there. So that's just where I'm at, yeah.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you, Your Honor. Yeah, I agree. And I'd be prepared to make a motion if that's the appropriate time. I don't know if Clarence wants to.
Councilmember Black, are you, would you like to make any further comment? Or do you have any additional questions?
I guess I have a question for Kristen, if she's there. If I'm understanding correctly, from a land use perspective, once this is permitted, is this home always then going to be entitled to that? And could it be that, I don't know, another daycare come in after and utilize it for that purpose? And not be as professional or good or, so to speak?
Yeah, I'll answer to the best of my knowledge, but maybe Attorney Chris can chime in too. So as I understand the special land use, it does run with the property as long as the business that comes in meets all of the same conditions. So it would have to be with the condition for the walkers and the condition for the drop offs only on Princeton, then that special land use could continue with this particular property. Is that correct, Attorney Chris?
That it runs with the property and not with the special land use applicant?
Yes, as long as the same conditions are.
I believe what would happen is the, it would not run with the property if there was another entity that they would also, they would be entitled to the six, which they're entitled to by state law. But they would not be entitled to that, the special land use. If the Del Pizos sold it, then, then, and it was, it was being operated as a daycare. It would be six, and there would have to be a special land use.
So I stand corrected.
Thank you.
Okay. So are we in a moment to make a motion?
Yeah.
Councilmember Black?
Yes.
Yes, okay. Just want to make sure we're, no further questions or discussion. We're in a moment to then make a motion on M0625. Good.
Yeah, I'm prepared to make the motion, Madam Mayor. I move to deny the special land use request because it does not meet all the standards in that section 138-653. Specifically, I do believe under standard four, the proposed use is designed so that the public health, safety, and welfare shall be protected, is not met based on the fact that I do not believe that there's sufficient room for off-street parking and drop off of children or, and not sufficient room for off-street employee parking for this unique property, which is the corner lot, has the shallow driveway, and is, of course, near to that narrow street on the front side.
Councilmember Black, as the supporter of that motion, are you in agreement with what Mayor Protem Gavin has laid out?
I concur.
Okay. Ms. Mitchell, please call the roll on M0625.
Patterson?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Black?
Yes.
Gavin?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes. The motion has passed. Ms. Mitchell, please read item number four on tonight's regular agenda.
Motion number M825, matter of approving the appointment to various boards and commissions.
Is there a motion to approve M0825?
So moved.
Motion made by Councilmember Patterson?
Support. Sorry, go ahead.
With support from Councilmember Baker. Ms. Van Black?
Yes, so, apologies. Get back to my packet. The next item is appointment to the Zoning Board of Appeals. So the motion in front of you is to accept the appointment of Mr. Benedict, who is out there. The zoning board, the zoning board of appeals has seven members and two, oh, I'm missing the word, I apologize. Two alternates. And that is just in case not all members can, are available, for whatever reason, alternates help them to ensure that we can do business on time. So Jason Benedict is up for appointment right now if you guys so wish.
Great. Any questions or discussion?
I just, thank you for agreeing to volunteer on a board. It's a thankless job, but we have some of the best volunteers out there on our boards and commissions, so thank you.
Yes. Councilmember Baker?
Thank you. Likewise, I appreciate your participation in events such as this and for your willingness to help ensure that the business is able to be conducted in that forum as well. Thank you.
Councilmember Black, do you have anything to add or do you wish to comment?
Yeah, you know, there was a cooler board that you could have joined, and I'd like to take some time to talk all about it. No, I'm joking. No, thank you, Mr. Benedict, for being an engaged citizen. And I think you're going to do very good things on the zoning board. Even though there is another board that could have used you, but that's not for, it's not for topping on this particular set.
Correct. Public comment on this agenda item. Okay, seeing none. I just will add that we had a nice phone conversation to Mr. Benedict. I'm very pleased to enthusiastically vote yes tonight. I think that you bring a lot to the table. Your resume is impressive, your travel's impressive, and I believe that you approach things in a thoughtful way. And that is much appreciated. You have good listening skills as well. And I think that that's necessary to serve in this capacity on this EBA. So thank you for that. Ms. Mitchell, please call the roll on M0825.
Baker?
Yes.
Black?
Yes.
Gavin?
Yes.
Patterson?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes. The motion has passed. Ms. Mitchell, please read item number five on tonight's regular agenda.
Motion number M925, matter of accepting the quarter ended December 31, 2024 budget to actual report.
Is there a motion to approve M0925?
So moved.
Motion made by Mayor Protem Gavin?
Support.
With support from Councilmember Patterson. Ms. Van Black?
Okay, the next item is, I'm going to call her Finance Director Carl Johnson to the podium with the skeleton. This item is our quarterly reports for revenues and expenditures ending December 31, 2024.
Thank you. Mr. Johnson, nice to see you.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Nice to see you guys tonight. The good news is the quarterly report ended December 31st, six months into our fiscal year, is boring. We're on track. That's exactly what I love to be able to say. So not a lot of highlights. As you know, staffing shortages in the first six months plagued us with getting these reports out timely. So I like to get them out within 30 days after quarter end. But we're finally getting caught up. But the results that are shown here are great. We're really on track. And the next item is additional good news, the budget amendment. But this is prior to that budget amendment. And like I say, literally no concerns that I have to report. And we appear in every fund to be right on track. So open any questions you might have.
Any questions or comments from council? Councilmember Baker?
Thank you, Your Honor. And thank you for such a boring report. It is a good sign that the ship has turned and we're continuing to now see the progress and the demonstration of applying more rigorous processes and checks and balances, if you pardon that pun, as well. So, yes, thank you. Good news.
Councilmember Black?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Carl, the 500 grand, the, how much of that is just given the staff, operations? Is that just consistent with the things that we have done to get ourselves, I guess, right the ship in terms of our staffing? New city manager, new team? Is it all in that bucket? Or is there something outside of that bucket that residents and council should know about?
Is that on the quarterly that you're referring to? Or is that the budget amendment?
Budget amendment, I'm sorry.
Okay, that's the next item.
My bad.
Okay.
Quarterly.
Okay. Any public input on this agenda item? Okay. Well, Mr. Johnson, I just want to thank you for, you know, this glowing report. It's amazing what can happen when you have a department that's fully staffed. And when cross-training is happening and processes and procedures are put in place. So thank you, excuse me, for that. Any other discussion from council? Okay. Ms. Mitchell, please call the roll on M0925.
Black?
Yes.
Gavin?
Yes.
Patterson?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes. The motion has passed. Ms. Mitchell, please read item number six on tonight's agenda.
Resolution number R225, matter of authorizing amendment 2025-3 of the 2024-25 fiscal year budget as presented.
Is there a motion to approve R0225?
So moved.
Motion made by Mayor Protem Gavin with support from Councilmember Baker. Mr. Johnson?
So this one, again, is more great news. Like I say, I love being before you tonight. So the biggest item here, so you see the amendment, and I think Councilmember Black referred to it there. It's $500,000 of additional revenue and $500,000 worth of expenses, which net out to $40,000 to the good, increasing our fund balance is the net impact of that. So what makes up this? On the revenue side, because of timing, usually in my first quarter, I adjust property taxes. And if you notice, all of this adjustment is property tax related. On July 1, we issued the property tax bills. And at that point, I know exactly how much revenue we're going to get. Except for, as you know, residents are still allowed to appeal their property tax bills. The March border review is already gone, but they're allowed to appeal to the tribunal, et cetera. So that number usually goes down a little bit unless you have significant appeals going on. But the good news related to this is that the assumption was, if you recall, property taxes can go up no more than 5% of inflation. And they went up 5% last year. Inflation, they capped out at 5%. So the budget that we put together that you passed assumed a, I believe it was 5.5% to 6% increase. So 5% for inflation and about a 1% increase due to new development. The actual results were more than an 8% increase in property taxes. So again, that's all new growth. We can't go up more than 5%. So it's, I think it was 8.4% was the amount of property tax growth, which is great news. Again, 3.5% new growth within our city. Which, again, the better news is that 2.5% of it was unplanned. And that's where this half a million dollars of additional revenue came in. So that revenue, of course, is being allocated to other items that have come up since then. The majority of this is salary and fringe related. As you know, 75% of our costs are salary and fringes. So what's happening, as you know, in the job market, as we've hired new positions over the first six months, everybody's, we're having to pay more for those positions. Insurance costs more. The increases that we gave to our public safety officers late in last fiscal year were not part of the budget. So those have to be incorporated in there. So the majority of what you see before you are the identification of those new positions, the increase in salary and fringes related to those, that we're adjusting the expenditure side related to those items. So that's the majority of what you see before you. And again, the good news is, is that we still net out revenue, revenue to the good and decrease or increase our fund balance, decrease our use of fund balance that we currently have budget here. So again, great news. We do this quarterly, so you can expect the next one at the second meeting in April. That's, you know, we're back on track, so that's the good news. But again, this identifies any of the potential expenditures that could be over. Again, we're not over, we're not in violation of anything until June 30, the measurement date. So we have our opportunity to amend. And this is one of those opportunities to amend our budget to ensure that we end up under budget in every department, as well as recognize our additional revenues that are coming.
Great. Thank you. Just more discussion questions, Councilmember Baker?
Sure. Thank you again, Madam Mayor. And thank you for yet another boring and encouraging report here. And I think you hinted at this at your closing comments. Are there any things that we're kind of worried about, things we're watching? Or, you know, any particular areas that we're paying special attention to? Or do you kind of feel like things really are in a roll and we're on top of, you know, all of the areas?
So being self-insured, if you recall, last year, we ended favorably because of our self-insurance. So we don't pay premium-based insurance. It's when people use healthcare, we pay dollar-for-dollar related to that. So the issues with Washington, there's been changes in Medicare. There's been changes in other places where costs have gone up. Like, I think our Medicare Advantage went up double digits percent as of January 1. So those are the kind of things that we just have to keep our eye on through six months. We're still in good shape. But again, just something to watch because a few unfavorable claims could really spike that up. But I'm comfortable that our budgets as of right now should incorporate that stuff. And really, I don't have any concerns. The other big one, if you recall, is our water sewer slash lead line slash paving of the roads. If you recall, we've kind of taken a hiatus with that and finished up the ones we were working on with, going into next year, the next year's budget will be, you know, jumping back into that full bore. The wrap-up from the prior years is running lower. The wrap-up from the prior years is running lower costs than we anticipated. So, as we're jumping into this year's budget session, I know it's crazy, we're already talking about the next year's budget, but as we're diving into that, they... Those three funds in particular, the water sewer, major local infrastructure fund, those funds are actually looking much better than what we had anticipated in the budget. So, again, good news so that more money is available to put towards those projects next year, hopefully try to minimize the, you know, the impact on rates and stuff as we look forward. So, concerns? I don't, as we sit here today, I don't have any, which is, again, love happy, boring news. And, again, we'll keep you updated, and to the extent anything happens before the quarterly, I'll be right back here in front of you and let you know, so.
Great. Thank you again.
Councilmember Black, are you good?
Yeah, I answered it.
Okay. Any public comment on this agenda item? Okay, seeing none. Ms. Mitchell, please call the roll on R-0225.
Gavin?
Yes.
Patterson?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Black?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes. The resolution has passed. Communications, Ms. Mitchell, where do we begin?
Councilmember Patterson.
Since last week, I don't have that much. So, happy March.
All right.
See you in two weeks. Have a more robust report.
Thank you, Your Honor. Similarly, not a ton in the last week. Just to reiterate a couple of things, though, Parks and Rec, registration for winter two classes is ongoing and available on the recreation registration site. Website can be reached by using the city website and clicking on Parks and Rec programs under the signup on the main page. And then, the registration for spring break vacation camp is open, and it'll run from Monday, March 24, the camp itself, through Thursday, March 27. Registration is also available online. So, the next meeting will be March 13 at 7:00 PM at the community center. And for the library board, the next meeting will be March 19 at 7:00 PM at the library. And that's all I have.
Councilmember Baker?
Hey, that's me. Thank you. Likewise, brief reports from the committees to which I liaise. Downtown Development Authority, DDA, as we've heard earlier, we are the passing of the baton. Congratulations again to Mike, and welcome back aboard Jennifer Finney. She's already been in her first meeting and conducted things fantastically. We are in good hands with Jennifer. She knows the city, and she knows our downtown, and we're very pleased to have her back as we continue to search for the permanent person for the position. And if you'd like any information about events and upcoming activities throughout our downtown, you can visit downtownberkeley.com. They meet next week's Wednesday, the 12th. Historical Committee meets the prior day, Tuesday, March 11, and there is still time to visit the Memories of 12 Mile exhibit that's proudly being displayed in our museum as we speak. It features photos and memories from across 12 Mile, from the 1920s to the 2000s. And for more information on that and other cool historical tidbits, you can visit them at berkeleyhistory.com. And finally, it was Albert Einstein who once said, "Know where to find the information and how to use it. That's the secret of success." And I offer that as some very important information, especially at the federal level, is being restricted or rejected or purged. The CDC in particular has significantly cut back on sharing important health and disease information. They've purged all of their LGBTQ-plus information, health equity, social vulnerabilities, and things like that. And meanwhile, diseases don't care who's in charge, and the flu, the measles, COVID, bird flu are continuing to pick up. There's 70 confirmed cases of bird flu in humans, as close as Ohio, with one fatality. So, my point in this is to do... I'm doing my best to try to stay informed with this kinds of information. There's several resources out there that you could seek out, the Mayo Clinic, Healthline.com, things like that, if you want it delivered to your inbox. I found a thing called YourLocalEpidemiologist.com. I had to look up how to spell that, but Google helped me. Your Local Epidemiologist sends newsletters twice a week with up-to-date information on the diseases and where the hotspots are and what you can do to protect yourself. So, you know, especially as we see access to information being curtailed, part of us as an informed electorate is to be aware of what's going on, and especially to take care and protect ourselves and our families, right? Now more than ever, please hug somebody you love. And with that, I pass back.
Thank you. Councilmember Black?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Again, I'll reiterate what I said last week, which is that the Committee for Engagement and Transparency, pardon me, will be meeting on March 12. Thank you again to Director Flora, and another huge congratulations and salute back to former DDA Director McGinnis. I am very blessed to be able to serve this nation as a soldier, and one of the things that I've noticed, especially last week while I was at Fort Bragg for training, for those that don't know, is wildfires have swept through both North Carolina and South Carolina. And I just want to echo to our beautiful community to not let the best of us come out during the worst times. And I say that to say that it shouldn't take disasters or mass casualty events, or it should not take the worst things to bring us together. We can do that every day, and if you think about what's the wildfires in LA, certainly the flooding that hit southwest Detroit, you know, people, it seems, we always do a great job of coming together when things are at their worst, and it is always amazing to see and also heartbreaking that it takes that. You know, Councilman Baker always says, you know, hug somebody you love, but I would say, man, hug somebody that you don't. And maybe now more than ever, it's a good time for that. So, just want to encourage us to continue to do what we do so well in this community, which is be engaged. When we talk about being engaged, I think sometimes we talk about boards and commissions and things like that, but, hey, man, be engaged next door, be engaged down the street, be engaged across the street, because I can tell you, the things that I am seeing on the military side with the natural disasters and things like that, when you see communities, you know, having no choice but to rely on each other, you really do start to see what community is about. So, just want to see us continue to do that here minus the disaster. That's all I have, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Ms. Van Black?
I do want to report that Councilmember Henin is out sick today.
Yes.
And, but he is still actively engaged at home because he's providing us valuable feedback about the mics, so thank you, Councilmember Henin.
Thank you.
Also, just want to remind everyone that we have put together an informal group for the Dorothea Pilot Pocket Park closure. It's a mouthful. And we are going to be meeting on March 13 at 5:30 at Coffee and Bark, so it's open to anyone who wants to participate in that discussion and help with those... Help brainstorm what that looks like.
Thank you. Ms. Attorney?
I have nothing this evening.
Okay, thank you. I attended the grand, I'm going to call it a reopening of TLG Fitness. They're at 2642 11 Mile Road. This was this past Saturday, the former home of Zoom Room. And I just have to say, like, Tracy, the owner, has created such an incredible space, and there's such an incredible community. She has all kinds of fitness classes. I mean, if... I think it would meet all the classes there. There's so many to choose from. I don't think anyone could say, oh, I don't like any of these things, because there's just so many. She's encouraging, she's affirming, she's a great coach, and her staff was there as well on Saturday, and I think that we are so fortunate to have such an activated and engaging business in our city. They were two doors down, just in a little space, 1,200 square feet. She's now in 4,600. So, TLG Fitness, you can check them out online and see if there's a class that you might want to dip a toe into. One, I always say this, one of my favorite things to do as mayor is to marry people, and I had a wedding on Friday, and everyone just looks so young, younger and younger all the time. And this couple was absolutely adorable, and I... It brought me just... My husband and I are celebrating our 40th anniversary on March the 9, and that's a long time, a very long time. And so, I'm looking at this couple, and I'm just like, all this stuff's going through my head, and I was like, God bless, ignorance is bliss. But it's encouraging. So, it also made me think back, all those 40 years ago. So, Mike Dean, if you're listening, here's a perk plug compliment for you. You know, life takes all kinds of twists and turns, and you're faced with challenges, and at the end of the day, the person that you choose to be with, as long as you can ride those waves and meet those challenges, and I am in no way saying it's easy, but I've been fortunate to have a partner in life who sometimes I want to just throttle him, and other times I can't imagine going through this with anyone else. So, happy anniversary, Mike Dean, a little bit early, and best wishes to the happy couple on Friday. I'm not saying their names out loud because this is sort of a semi-secret wedding. They're having another larger wedding down the road, but it was... There were reasons personal to them that they wanted to do this civil ceremony. So, congrats to them, and I hope that life brings you all the things that you're looking for and a little bit of challenge so that you grow as people. And with that, I will entertain a motion to...
So moved.
Motion made by Councilmember Patterson?
Support.
Support for Mayor Pro Tem Gavin. Ms. Mitchell, will you please call the roll?
Baker?
Yes.
Black?
Yes.
Gavin?
Yes.
Patterson?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes. The Monday, March 3, 2025, meeting of the Berkeley City Council is adjourned.